One second.
Okay.
Okay, just give him a few minutes to get in. Still have a few people connecting.
Kristi, do you see Mr. Hirsch on there?
Yes, I believe he's Tom.
Okay.
I see Jason for the applicant. See Mr. Naples. And I saw Tom looking for him. Hold on. I see Tom, but I don't see video. There you are. Okay.
Mr. Hershey, have yourself muted.
I fixed it.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Is there anyone else that you have? You have Jason, John Naples, and yourself. Is there anyone else?
The architect on?
Brian Brzezinski.
Yeah, Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes, I saw him. I.
I am here.
You are there, okay. So your name.
Okay. With that being said, that we have all parties here, I would like to welcome everyone to the August 27, 2020 Bradley Beach Planning Board meeting. Will everyone please rise for our pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The 48-hour notice is required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met as notice of this regular virtual meeting was emailed on August 10, 2020, and published in the Asbury Park Press, The Co-Star, and The Coaster. A copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office, and a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Chair Shook.
Here.
Mr. Albanares excused this evening, and Mayor Engelstad is excused this evening. Mr. Waterman.
Here.
Mr. Gubatosi.
Here.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Here.
Mr. Jung.
Here.
Ms. DeMarco.
Here.
Ms. Russo. Amy.
Amy, can you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Here.
And Mr. Mayner.
In.
Here.
Also present this evening, Monica Kowalski, attorney to the board, Joe Frida, board engineer, and Christine Bell, our board planner.
Okay. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the meeting minutes of June 25, 2020?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Russo.
Hi.
Mr. Mayner.
Yes.
Mr. Marco.
Yes.
Mr. Jung.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes. Yes. She's not picking it up?
We can hear you.
We can hear you work.
Okay.
Kristi, can you hear?
I think Kristi is.
Kristi's frozen.
Yeah.
Hold on. She's frozen. Hold on. Well, we are still recording. So we can, yeah, we can continue. I'm the host now. So she'll be, she's going to try to get back in. We are still on the record. We are still recording on the co-host, so.
Okay, she's asked, she asked to hold on one second.
Okay. Gotta love technology.
It's gonna work. It's a virtual village, doesn't it?
I should have brought my laptop to you.
No, it's, it's.
It's the internet issue. It's not the laptop. It's her connection.
It's not working, and it does nothing. It's a circle and circle and circle.
All right, how about if I hang up with you, and we'll have Monica put her phone next to the computer so you could hear what's going on?
Um, yeah, I need her co-host, and I think, um, yeah, she should be able to control everything right now, but.
Okay. Monica?
Yep, I got it. No problem.
Yeah. Can you call her? Yeah, can you call her and?
I'm just gonna mute everybody for one second, so just please hold on.
Yeah.
All right, everyone. So what we've done is I've actually have Kristi on my office speakerphone so she can listen. She's going to attempt to get back in the meeting. But just to continue with the approval of the minutes and the motion that's on the floor, Mr. Gubatosi, how do you vote, sir? Al? Al, is that it?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair Shook?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Would you like to continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Uh, currently, we have no resolutions to be memorialized. So we have an application under consideration for this evening, which is Coastal Custom Builders LLC, aka Bradley West. Block 32, lots 17 and 18. Address is 803 and 811 Main Street. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the demolition of an existing structure and amenities on both properties and the construction of a mixed-use building on both lots. The mixed-use building will consist of two commercial uses with storage on the ground floor and parking in the rear. The second through fourth floors will consist of eight.
Eighteen.
Sorry, eighteen two-bedroom apartments. Application requires a variance for lack of a loading space. Applicant is represented by Mr. Hirsch.
Now, Mr. Mr. Shook, Chair Shook, I understand you have a conflict for the evening, sir?
Yes, and what I'd like to do is recuse myself from this application for personal reasons, which I would like to be kept confidential.
Absolutely, Chair Shook. And unfortunately, our typical vice chair or co-chair, vice chair, however, alternate chair is not present this evening. So I believe we have a nomination from you, sir, for the, for a chair to continue with the evening.
Yes, that'll be Mark Rosenthal.
That would be true.
Mr. Rosenthal, thank you so much for accepting the honor of the appointment of Chair Shook, and we look forward to your leadership this evening. So, Chair.
With that, I'm gonna mute and remove myself.
You're removing yourself from the Zoom call for purposes of the record so that we do not violate the municipal land use law with regard to conflict of interest and imperious of improprieties. Thank you so much, sir. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you all.
And just for purposes of the record, we have reviewed the notice as it has been published, and same is acceptable in its current form. So, Mr. Hirsch, if you would like to have the floor, please.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Good evening. I am representing the applicant Coastal, Coastal Custom Builders LLC. The chairman, who has now stepped down, has already set out the basics of what relief the applicant is seeking. I plan to call three witnesses tonight. Mr. Naples, John Naples, as a principal of the applicant. Jason Fixter, as a professional engineer, and also as a professional planner. And Brian Brzezinkis, as the architect for the project. It's essentially a one-variance application for the loading zone, and site is essentially fully conforming with your zoning ordinance and development ordinances per your board engineer's report. And we will be going through that with our engineers as we get to it. As my first witness, I'd like to call John Naples.
There is John. There's John. How are you doing today, John?
Good, thank you.
Good. Can you please raise your right hand? And do you swear that the evidence that you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And/or your affirmation as to same, please?
I do.
Thank you so much. And can you spell your last name for the record and state your address?
N-A-P-L-E-S, and I live at 1009 Ocean Avenue, Unit 1, Bradley Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Naples, would you just tell your board, the board, your position with the applicant?
I'm one of two owners of the property, and we're looking to do a joint venture and tear down what's there and build a building.
All right. And how, since approximately, or the exact date, if you know, what date have you controlled this property from?
It's, I believe, a little bit over a year.
Okay. Would you give the board a little background as to what has existed and exists on the property prior to this application?
There was a repair shop that Mr. Ruggie retired. So when we purchased it, it was empty. Nobody was using it. The property to the south was vacant, and the previous owner actually gutted it. So right now, the building is gutted. That's a two-story building that's gutted. It had two billboards which were removed before we purchased it because that was part of the agreement that we didn't want to have to deal with the two billboards. So pretty much that's it. Nothing has been operating there for years on either property.
All right. Now, when you, when the property was purchased, you performed, or your companies performed a due diligence to ensure the condition of the property. Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
And as part of that due diligence, you had performed, or your companies had performed a, what is known as a Phase 1 environmental, and then subsequently a Phase 2 environmental. Is that correct?
Yes.
And those documents are all in file with the planning board as part of the application, correct?
Yes, they're part of the partner engineering Phase 1, Phase 2 reports.
And you would also, at the time you were negotiating, purchased the property, received a letter from the owner at the time, which was from the DEP, which was a no further action letter?
That is correct. There was a no further action letter. There was a letter from the borough of Bradley Beach saying that when the underground tanks were removed, they were in good condition, nothing was leaking. And they had, they actually had their own engineering company there when partner engineering was doing their site work. So they kind of did it some, they really had a gathering. One was watching the other, and yes.
And that letter from the municipality, from the fire official was, that was back in 1989, correct?
Yes.
That's.
The no further action letter, I believe, was, it looks like it was 1999.
And you were satisfied at that point with those reports essentially indicating that no further action was needed, that all the issues that might have been identified as general concerns, as a Phase 1 will do, were satisfied in the Phase 2?
Correct. I took the lead of the engineering company, and they did a Phase 2, and they did drilling in all the same, all the spots that were, that were, that were, where the tanks were, where the inside, where the lifts were. They did quite a bit of whirrings, and everything came back clean.
Okay. That's the only questions I have right now for Mr. Naples.
Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Naples? Hearing no questions. Do we have any questions from the public for Mr. Naples? And please keep in mind, these are questions only as to his testimony and not any comments. Can you raise your little hands from the? Kristi, do you see any hands?
See it moving.
Kristi, can you see any hands? No, she says no. Okay, seeing no hands, sir, you're welcome to call your next witness.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. I wanted to call the next our engineer planner, Jason Fixter.
Thank you, Jason. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. Can you please state your name and information for the record?
Yep, Jason F-I-C-H-T-E-R, Insight Engineering at 1955 Route 34 in Wall. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I have appeared before this board a number of times.
Thank you so much, sir. Have a, have at it. You're accepted, obviously.
Okay, he's accepted as a professional engineer and planner. Thank you so much.
And has been many times before, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure. All right, Jason, you were retained by the applicant to prepare testimony for tonight's hearing, correct?
I was, yes.
And you were, you were retained to do that, both in your capacities as a professional engineer and a professional planner, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And give us a little background as to what you did in preparation to provide your opinions and factual testimony tonight.
Yep, so I can run you through the whole thing. I just have one quick question before we start. In terms of exhibits, am I able to just share my screen and show them A1 through whatever? Does that work?
You have the ability, yes.
Okay, so let's give it a try. Okay. Oh, button twice. There we go. Now everyone should have it. Can everyone see a plan with an aerial map on it?
Yes.
I think on the exhibit list, Kristi, that was A2, I sent.
All right, good. So mark the ready. So this is A2. I also have the proposed condition. Was that A1, maybe?
That was A1.
All right. And I have another exhibit that we'll get to later that maybe I'll just skip for now so that we don't get confused, and I'll flow into it as we go.
That's fine.
I'll start off, as I'm speaking, with the aerial exhibit of the existing conditions, showing the property lines from the county tax map records, labeling the lots and blocks, as well as an aerial image. The subject property is outlined in yellow. It's in the GBW, General Business West Zone. When you put the two properties together, they total 16,795.72 square feet of total lot area. The lot is currently improved with a building and pavement, but as John stated, it's currently vacant. The applicant, again, is seeking to, seeking approval to demolish everything and then build a mixed-use building with parking. The building that's being proposed, you'll hear more details from the architect, but just generally speaking, it's a four-story building, 48 feet high, and that complies with your ordinance. The ground floor has two retail spaces totaling 907 square feet. There's a 580-square-foot foyer with a bathroom and an elevator. There's a store, some storage and mechanical space. And then the rest of the three floors have six two-bedroom units each, so that's a total of 18 residential units. We're providing 40 parking spaces with access from Main Street. And on our proposed exhibit, just to point out what we're looking at here, the brownish-yellow color, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but the brownish-yellow color, that represents the portion of the building that reaches ground level. And then the yellow portion of the building represents what's above the parking, that's building above parking. And then the gray represents parking area that's open to the sky, and then, of course, the red brick pattern up along Main Street is the public sidewalk. All utilities are available in Main Street, and that makes connections simple. In terms of stormwater, the project is not major development for stormwater. And what we're doing is reducing runoff from the site by capturing the roof runoff in an underground system, which is located under the parking lot, and you can actually see it on the exhibit in the back that's underground. The system captures and recharges all roof runoff up to the 10-year storm, and then beyond the 10-year storm, runoff simply flows overland to Main Street as it does today. So that means that 52.5% of the site doesn't generate any runoff up to the 10-year storm. And then, all total, the two 10- and 100-year storms reduce runoff from the site by 44%, 50%, and 8%, respectively. We're also improving water quality of our runoff because we're proposing less area that's considered dirty and pervious, and that's a term that the DEP uses. And the way we accomplish that is by covering the parking area. That's what would create dirty and pervious areas. So we cover it. We improve our water quality of the runoff. The areas of the site that aren't covered by the building are graded to flow out to Main Street, which is where most of the runoff goes today, and which is the safest place for it to go. We're proposing a two-way driveway from Main Street into the parking area. We have 25-foot-wide drive aisles, nine-by-18-foot parking spaces. Your ordinance requires us to provide 36 parking spaces. We're proposing 40, which is four more than is required. However, to transition into that third exhibit I mentioned earlier, the fire department actually reached out to the applicant earlier this week with a request. They requested that two of the proposed parking spaces be removed to provide them with more space to pull their fire truck out of their garage bay. And the applicant's happy to accommodate this request. But quick note, after losing the two spaces, we still have two more than were required. So I want to pause there for a second and run you through that visually. If I go to the existing exhibit, I can even zoom in a little because we're virtual. Okay, so the applicant site is outlined in yellow. The proposed development is not here, but the important part is just above on the exhibit, this is the fire department building. The center portion of the building are the garage bays where the fire trucks are located. And what the fire trucks do is they go around the back of the site, they enter an overhead door into the garage bay, and when they leave, they come out the front, make a left, and off they go to Main Street. So what the fire department asks for is for an area on the northwest corner of the site to be paved and left open to give them a little bit of swing area for their trucks to make that turn. The applicant was also advised that the fire department may or is buying a new fire truck that's even a little bit longer than the one they have. They put their longest fire truck in the northernmost bay, which is why they're asking for the northwest corner of the site to provide a little parking. So I want to present this exhibit, which I don't think is on the exhibit list, correct, Tom?
Correct.
Okay.
He only came up with this in the last two days.
Would this then be marked, what would the exhibit number be?
A4. Terms of our list, it would now become A4. A3 is the architectural elevation of the front of the building.
Okay, so now looking at A4, this is just a section of the site plan that was submitted to you. On the top of the sheet is where the, just off the border here, is where the fire department overhead doors are located. The two parking spaces on the northwest corner of the site, which are outlined in red, and it says added fire lane, and then we're proposing to stripe no parking fire lane, that's the area that the fire department requested. Before we did that, we had a couple of parking spaces there that were designated to Unit 401. But on the southern end of that row of parking, we had two extra parking spaces that were not assigned. So it was a simple solution. Take out the two parking spaces here, provide that area for the fire department's use, and then reassign the spaces on the southern end of that parking space. So that is just a simple change. And we're still, again, we still have two more parking spaces than is required. All right, let's get back to the big picture. So your ordinance doesn't require any parking spaces for the retail component and 36 spaces for the residential units. And that comes from two spaces per unit as required by the Residential Site Improvement Standards. So since each residential unit has to provide two spaces, this gives us an opportunity to provide tandem parking for the residents. So 12 of the 18 units are parked in tandem. So again, looking at the proposed exhibit, you can see the tandem parking spaces just behind the retail component. And then we have single-stack parking along the western property line. And of course, we're required to provide two ADA parking spaces, so we do that as well. They're not labeled here. They should be. The, the two spaces that are unlabeled just behind the foyer are ADA spaces. Most of the frontage along Main Street today is depressed curb, and what we're proposing to do is reduce that down to one driveway, so that's going to create more on-street parking. So we anticipate an additional three to four on-street parking spaces will be created as a result of this. We're proposing a refuse area at the southwest corner of the site. It's enclosed with six-foot-high masonry walls. It has ample space for the development at 10 feet by 17 feet. The applicant plans to use private hauling to manage refuse and recycling from this refuse area, which means there's going to be options for the most efficient method to collect. which means there's going to be options for the most efficient method to collect the refuse and recycling. We're proposing 16 LED sightlights for the project, and they're all mounted on the proposed building. There's four on the front of the building to light the public sidewalk and driveway. And then that same light is also mounted on the rear of the building to light the uncovered parking area. And then, in the covered parking area, there's eight canopy lights mounted basically to the ceiling of the building in the parking area that lights that covered parking area. So in all, the site is safely lit, and there's nice even distribution throughout. In its existing condition, the site's Main Street frontage is, again, mostly depressed curb, and there's only two street trees out there as a result of that. So we're eliminating most of that depressed curb, and that gives us an opportunity to provide more street trees. There's, of the two that are out there today, we're able to keep one of them, and then we're going to propose three more. So we'll have four in total. And then on the southwest corner of the site, by the proposed refuse area, we're proposing landscaping in a mulch bed and also using this to provide an evergreen buffer to the refuse enclosure. On the plans that were submitted on the northwest corner of the site, we had an opportunity for landscaping. That's been removed, as shown on A4, for the benefit of the fire department to be able to swing their trucks out in that area. Terms of signage, this was much discussion with the applicant's team, and the applicant, as a result of all those discussions, is not proposing any signage at this point. We do anticipate that the retail tenants will want facade signs, which your ordinance permits. So we just left a place for those potential future signs. But again, for the purpose of this application, the future retail tenants will have compliant signage.
Location of those proposed signs, obviously, we don't know who the tenants will be. That is shown on Exhibit A3 on that elevation. And the architect will discuss that also.
So the application is fully compliant, again, except for the fact that we require relief for not providing a loading space. So your ordinance calls for one loading space for what is called retail commercial uses from 0 to 10,000 square feet. That's what would require one loading space. We're only proposing 907 square feet of retail commercial space or less than 10% of the ordinance limit for a loading space. Your ordinance also excludes this requirement for certain uses that, as the ordinance states, quote, "Do not normally send or receive any materials or supplies by means of large trucks or tractor-trailer." So again, we have two separate retail spaces at 437 square feet and 471 square feet. So while retail isn't on the exclusion list, our two small retail spaces will certainly not call for large trucks or tractor-trailers. Dedicated loading spaces are very important for large and independent sites, but in urban and micro-urban environments like this, where the entire streetscape is tied together, they're uncommon. And the reason for that is twofold. First, with small sites like this one, a significant portion of the developable area would be removed by a large loading space and truck maneuvering area. I feel it's kind of like the tail wagging the dog. It makes it very difficult to reasonably utilize the site to the benefit of the community. Utilization of the site would be dramatically reduced if a compliant loading space was provided, and the proposed development is already modest. Second reason, there's on-street parking and an internal parking area that may be used. Small sites call for small trucks. They may even be able to park in a regular parking space, or they can park on-street or in a nearby public place. And these deliveries are typically very brief because the volume of material being delivered will be small. And this is why we commonly see deliveries occurring right in parking lot drive aisles, which is certainly an option here. Allowed or not allowed, it's something we see commonly. In terms of purposes of planning for this relief we're seeking, I believe that the general welfare is protected here because, again, I don't believe a dedicated loading space is necessary. And granting this relief allows for a development that can be a positive contributor to the neighborhood. I believe the site provides sufficient space for retail and residential uses to help meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The location is perfect for this kind of mixed-use building. You have a very nice downtown Main Street area with a variety of commercial uses. A common planning strategy to help these commercial uses thrive is to provide residences above them, which creates foot traffic and customers. This goes to another purpose of planning, which is to provide an appropriate density to contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood. And again, altogether, this would promote the general welfare. Without relief from the loading space requirement, we'll lose units, which would be contrary to these purposes of planning, I believe. The development itself is designed in such a way that it honors the existing neighborhood and is very attractive, which is another purpose of planning. We're promoting, we're, we're preventing urban sprawl by providing 18 units in this micro-urban infill development, which is actually a very significant one in recent years, a purpose of planning, that is. And I believe the development conserves property values in the neighborhood. What's proposed is a dramatic improvement from what's there today, which is both deferred maintenance, and it's been vacant for quite some time. So like a rising tide raises all ships, I believe this development will be an asset to the community. The only potential impact to the public is loading from a street parking space. And if this happens again, I believe it'll be quick, and it'll occur from public parking spaces. So I don't anticipate any adverse impacts to the public. Your ordinance allows an exclusion if the use doesn't expect large trucks. And again, while retail doesn't qualify for this exclusion, the small retail spaces won't require large trucks for deliveries. This development is consistent with your 2014 master plan reexamine regarding development along the west side of Main Street. I don't believe granting this relief will cause substantial, a substantial impact to the public, nor do I believe it'll substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. As you consider the, the negative criteria, those two prongs that I just mentioned, I always like to highlight the word substantial. You're not just looking to see if approving the application would cause an, an impact to the, to the public or impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. You're looking to see if there would be a substantial detriment or a substantial impairment. And I don't believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. And then on balance, I believe granting the relief from the loading space will allow for a more neighborhood-appropriate development, and the benefits will substantially outweigh any potential detriments, giving you the ability to approve this application with confidence. That's all I have for direct.
Jason, it's a follow-up to your planning testimony. The Miss Milanius Law provides, as one of the statutory grounds for a board to grant a C or both variants, what is known as a better zoning alternative or a C2 variance. In your opinion, does the granting of the variants to permit the development to go forward without a loading zone present a better zoning alternative based on the various testimony you just provided than what would be achieved if you required one?
Yeah, it absolutely does. I probably should have specified that when I talked about the variants. All the information I gave you and the proofs I provided you are framed around the C2 criteria, the better planning alternative. So yes, that's what my testimony was about, and I totally agree with that.
Thank, thank you. I have no further questions right now for Mr. Fixer.
Does anybody else from the board have any questions? For, for Mr. Fixer?
Mark?
Yes, Doug?
Yes, hi. About a question for Mr. Fixer. Can you take me through, we'll come back to the loading zone issue, I'm sure. In your presentation, I was interested, you mentioned the open spaces in the rear of the, of the lot that are across from the fire department. Can you take me through, what physical barriers, if any, are there at the end of those parking spaces between that and the access lane to the fire department? Does that just end on flat, or is there any physical barrier separating those parking lots from the access lane behind it?
In the existing condition, there's a short run of curb generally along our western property line. That's removed, and the original plan for the application was for us to build a curb along the western property line to contain the proposed parking spaces back there. What the fire department is asking for is that, well, if I go over to that exhibit, they're asking for us to take out those two spaces on the northwest corner. And what we do in the perimeter is put a flush curb, which generally is just going to hold the pavement together. But it'll be flat. They'll be able to drive over the whole thing, so there would be no barriers. As a fire truck comes out of the, out of its garage bay, if it needs to swing across our property a little bit, it could do that without interruption.
All right. And to the north of that added fire lane, there is a, there is a parking lot, correct?
Correct.
What, if any, physical interface is there with that, with that part of your parking lot and that parking, and that adjacent lot? Is there a, is there a similar physical curve, or what is there happening there?
So what, just north of this no-parking-fire-lane area, again, we have our flush curb along the northern property line, and then the neighboring property has pavement, so it'll be continuous. You won't see a property line in real life. You'll just be able to drive right across. And they have no curb on their edge of pavement, so they will flow together.
Okay, so is it possible then that those parking, I mean, is there, you know, you described one in and out ingress on Main Street. So given the, given the revised layout in the back lot, is there additional ingress egress?
Yeah, that, it's an astute question, and it's one of much discussion. When you go out there, I'm sure everybody is familiar with this. I'll call it an alleyway, for lack of a better term, that's between the applicant's property and the fire department. When you go out there, it looks like a public road, and you can easily drive across it. It's a one-way, adjacent to the applicant's property anyway. It's one way to the north. I could see a resident that's, that lives here in this proposed development exiting through this fire lane, going out to the alleyway, and then to the traffic light at Main Street. I could see that happening. I know it happens today with other developments and public in the area and so on. What we're focusing on with our application is access from Main Street. We don't want to take away the access to the alleyway. We'd like that to be available. But for purposes of the application, it's all about Main Street. And the reason for that is when you follow this alleyway to the south towards Lorraine Avenue, there's a section of the alleyway that's a public right-of-way. And then the, the wheels come off after that point. There, I think there's a borough property, not a right-of-way, but a borough property. And then it becomes private property and a series of easements. And we looked into these, and it became very complicated, and we felt it was much more complicated than it needed to be. So does the public have the right to drive there? If I was a betting man, I'd say yes, but I'm not, so I won't. And we have to be absolutely correct for this application, so we can't say with confidence that that's allowed. So that's why we want to focus on this Main Street access. And again, if this is approved and built this way, would a resident exit that way? Probably. And would anybody care? Probably not. So that, that's kind of where we left it. We're focusing on Main Street. If there was no access there, this development would function just fine with that Main Street driveway and would also be fully compliant with your ordinance.
Mr. John, just, Tom Hirsch, just so we're clear on that, while it seems like no issue, and it wouldn't be for us, for a tenant or somebody in the parking lot to pull out, take a right turn on that section of the alleyway, obviously, to use that as a, a regular ingress or egress, you have to come down the one-way street. And that's, that's where it's complicated because the properties back here, there are easements from different property owners. And it's a little befuddling trying to review this. I tried. As to what rights the public has, I mean, the public's using it for sure. But we couldn't risk saying that's going to be a primary ingress or egress, and then somebody comes up and says, I never gave you an easement to go over my property back further. So that's why we're proposing this as it is. And, you know, if, if, if some use is made of that to, which makes sense for a lot of reasons, to come out to the alleyway and then to, around to the light, so be it. But we don't control some of that. It's not, if it was just a, you know, a street, clearly a street.
Understood.
Probably would have said, fine, you know, let's use it.
Yes, so, you know, this, I may come back to this in the comments section, but my question really was, you know, goes to one of my primary interests in reviewing the plan, which is this whole issue of single ingress egress as it's formally presented. When we have this number of residents and potential traffic coming in and off the street, I was interested in whether that's the only ingress egress. But whether we talk officially or unofficially, there is existing right, you know, access. And I would certainly want to discuss that a little further, get our board engineer input on that, whether there's been a discussion to that degree, because to me, ingress egress for such a structure, that number of residents and potential traffic onto Main Street through one single ingress is, is a matter of interest to me in terms of potential impact on traffic. So that was the rest of my question, I believe. You know, we'll probably come back to this.
Yeah, we, we understand that. We, we, believe me, we've given it thought about that, that very issue. It's, it's.
And I, certainly, I mean, I live on Ocean Park Avenue towards the beach. But coming out to that, I, I understand the nature of existing property and existing lot that's next to the property, which is an unofficial parking lot access point. So I just want to talk about, I just want to come to a full understanding of how that impacts, how that interfaces with your structure and your proposed ingress egress.
I, I just wanted to highlight one point on that, just to throw a point for consideration as we look at that in totality. One of the comments in Jerry Frida's letter is that one driveway is allowed for the property, so we have to weigh that as well. And, and I think large and traffic is, is a relative number depending on people's tolerance and whatnot. I, I think of this as a smaller project with, with a single driveway. But I hear what you're saying. If you can have to, certainly if you can have one going back to the alleyway, that's great. Just have that circular flow. That, that would be great. But if all we had was Main Street, I think a development like this can support itself.
Well, I'm sure we'll come back to this issue.
This is Jerry. I do have a question for Jason. Following up on Doug's question, the, the lot next door, the parking lot, can those cars still navigate and use those spaces on the north, property to the north?
Let me try and, does this work? There you go. Yeah, I'll zoom out a bit. So to the north of us, this lot here, actually, boy, it gets weird. Their, their lot actually goes out into that alleyway behind us. This is, you know, where things get really weird. The dotted line represents this easement for the alleyway. But they have, you know, when you go out there, you don't see all these lines. All you see is a parking lot. There's a driveway to the parking lot or an access aisle to the parking lot right here, back on the alleyway, and that would be maintained. We would have no impact whatsoever on these vehicles being able to pull in and park and maneuver.
And it'll function properly? The, the aisle width is sufficient?
I didn't measure it. That's their property. We're, we're staying within our boundaries, not affecting them.
The, the, will there be a full-face curb between your property and their property along that piece of the project?
That was the goal. I'm on A4 now. As you head west of the westerly limit of our building, posing a six-inch curb, but then once we get to that fire area, we're going to drop the curb to be flush. We're going to corner along the west property line and then pick up again the six-inch curb along these parking spaces here. So to answer your question, our plan was to have curb over here if, for no other, prevent crossover between the two properties.
Yeah, I, I like that. I almost would ask if you'd consider extending the curb maybe another 20 feet just to better, better prevent people from traversing from one property to the other, but stop it short enough so that it wouldn't interfere with the fire trucks. but stop it short enough so that it wouldn't interfere with the uh fire trucks.
Extend it another twenty feet. I'm not sure where you're
Uh, maybe not twenty, maybe ten, maybe maybe even five or six. In other words, instead of cutting it off where you are.
Yep.
Your side. Can you push it a little further? I don't think the fire trucks need to go uh eighteen feet deep into the property, do they?
Well, they, this is what they asked for, and since it piqued upon our access aisle, we just accommodated and didn't ask questions about the dimensions of it. We could research it further if if you like. I think what we're gonna hear from them is we need to get our new fire truck and see how much space we need to maneuver that thing.
Right. My my only concern is like people leaving your site. Um, I don't want them to, you know, if they cut that corner and swing a real, you know, flat curb, they're gonna be driving over the neighbor's property constantly. I don't think we really want that to happen, so um, if you can find out from the fire people what they really need and maybe push that curb a little further, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, we would, we can do that, sure.
Gotcha. We'll do it.
All right, that's all I have.
Jerry, excuse me, Jerry?
Yes.
Can I ask? Who owns that? Who owns that's that parking lot adjacent to this property?
Um, I don't know. Uh, I don't believe it's a borough lot, so I'm not sure who owns it.
Is that the tax map?
On the tax map, it doesn't identif- it's not identified as a borough property. It could be, but it's not identified.
I mean, I know, you know, my my, you know, my casual experience with that is that it's used during uh events at the fire hall, such as voting, when people are needing uh additional parking. So I I, you know, I've never really thought about it, but you know, to this discussion, to the egress and access, that sort of thing, whether it's private property or whether it's rural property.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, the property to the north is owned by the uh right, the property diagonally across the street. It's the flooring center. The people that own that building, it has a deed restriction. It can only be used as a parking lot for that building. It's actually diagonally across, Jason. That that, I I guess they came in for a variance a while back to put a couple extra apartments, and that was part of the variance is that they had a deed restriction.
I can tell you on the
Lot fourteen is strictly a parking lot for the property diagonally across.
All right.
Am I on the right lot, fourteen, I guess?
Yes, you are.
That's lot fourteen.
And then the next lot belongs to, I believe it's Jersey Central Power and Light.
Fifteen?
I think it's fifteen and thirteen, maybe. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know they they have the next alleyway. That's the one that goes out to the light.
All right.
That's what I was saying. There's a lot of easements and a lot of moving and moving.
I'm sure, because it never, you know, it's 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 been, it's just been, you know, agreed to. But lot fourteen then is private?
Yes, that belongs to the flooring center across the street. The owner's
All right, all right.
Explains a lot.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the board?
Uh, yes, George.
Gotcha. Yep, I can hear you.
So I have a question with regards to the signs. I see on your plan, you're proposing eight total, and you have two retail spaces. So the ordinance currently allow one sign per retail space. Um, I see you have two signs over each retail space, one sign proposed over the storage area, one sign proposed over the foyer, and one sign proposed over the driveway.
Mr. Ward, I mean, that was That was changed. Um, I don't I don't know if you saw the revision. A three shows the uh the 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 elevation, and we recognize that too, and the architect will speak to it. It's just now showing the signage over the retail spaces.
Okay.
It's not, I I agree with you. We saw the same thing. We said, what are all those things doing on the plan? We don't have that many, you know, spaces. So you know, correct, but we did A three, uh that elevation exhibit will show you that we got rid of several of those.
Perfect. Um, the other issue or something I just wanted to point out was I noticed that the building is set back two point five feet from the front property line. Is that correct still?
Yeah, the the focus there was um, there's an ordinance requirement for setback from the curb of twelve feet, and we're a little over twelve feet back and we're within the front property line. So I think it landed something like that. Yeah, two and a half or something like that.
Um, just keep in mind that uh you're allowed wall-mounted signs and projection signs on the front of the building. Projection signs uh cannot exceed twelve uh square feet. So take consideration that the, was it uh twelve square feet in the mounting bracket, that might push you over that two and a half foot setback into the right of way.
Got it. Understood.
That's it.
Thank you.
Mark, it's Al. I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Al.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, just continuing the discussion we were having uh 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 Mr. Fisher around the the two parking spaces that have been eliminated. Will that, I I understand that'll be a, you know, a flat, there will be no curb, and it'll be a, you know, the the area where the trucks can maneuver their uh their turns. My my question is, will this be marked in such a way that folks won't just park there, you know, to run into their apartment to get something or, you know? Will will there be clear demarcation that no parking will be allowed here?
So the the red that you're seeing, I have uh exhibit A four up on the screen, the red that you're seeing around that area and the label, that's just me making a note to call your attention. The
Right.
Black lettering that says no parking fire lane, that's intended to be painted on to the pavement for that purpose.
Okay, perfect. And um the, let's see. I I you, I know you've you've had some discussion, obviously, with our fire department, and I appreciate your efforts to make this modification. I I was also informed by our fire department that um there may be a a a concern about the location of our fire siren. Have you heard that issue yet?
Yeah, that that's, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I think Mr. Naples, uh, he he is the one who has had discussions with the fire department. Uh, I mean, it's not a concern relative to, you know, this application. I mean, zoning planning, you know, h- how we set up our site. Uh, they had some conversations about uh perhaps some changes to the uh nature of that uh, you know, warning horn, whatever you want to call it, uh, fire alarm. Um, but that is, that's just something for discussion between the property owners. It doesn't affect the application in any way.
Yeah, my understand, and I I agree with you. My understanding was um, there is a concern that the building will might, I don't know the height of the fire uh siren, but that the building height might actually be taller than the existing siren and might in fact block the sirens effectiveness for notifying the borough residents.
I I I don't, I'm not sure of the height of the siren. I mean, obviously, our building is within the, you know, permitted height in the ordinance. Um, uh, I don't know if they took that into account, you know, that there would could be a building, you know, in that location at some some point in time that complied with the zoning ordinance. I I it's the first I heard of that. Uh, I don't know, unless Mr. Naples has any other input on that. I didn't I didn't hear that as one of the discussions he had with the fire department.
Well, they they asked me if I would be willing to uh financially contribute to either moving or upgrading that siren. And I told them I definitely would be, but that I would need more information, what it was gonna cost, and, you know, a little more information. But I definitely have every uh, I definitely want to work with them, you know, the good guys, and I think that um if there's something I could do to 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 benefit them, I will do it.
John, do you happen to know how high it is?
I I really don't know. I really don't know. I didn't, I never measured the horn. I mean, this came on the last couple of days. If we had more time, I probably could have measured.
All right. Um, so thank you for that, and and Mr. Naples, thank you for that uh update. The um, we didn't discuss placement of mechanicals. I thought you might address that, Mr. Fisher. Is that something that you could share with us? Uh, will there be any mechanicals placed outside the building on the roof?
Boy, the architect to handle that, Jason, or do you?
Yeah, that that's correct. That will be the architect.
Okay, very good. Um, question regarding the access to the parking. Number one, I appreciate a lot of the positives that you've already identified for us, uh, you know, creating additional street parking. I guess my question was, what what um concerns might exist related to pedestrian safety, that specifically individuals moving from their cars parked to the building, from the building to their parked cars? Is there a concern that could be addressed through signage, uh, whatever, um, to provide better protection for residents who are crossing the driveway?
Yeah, the the one thing that we did do, um, it doesn't show up on this exhibit very well, but we put a uh a stop bar under the building here, right at the driveway, so vehicles will not just pull out to Main Street. They will actually stop at the building face. And that'll give the the driver and the pedestrians a chance to identify one another and and uh avoid conflict. A stop bar is a something, an arm that lifts up and down, or is it a speed bump? Uh, paint, like you would see uh at any stop sign intersection, that that wide bar, wide white bar. Got it. Yes.
And also, you may have addressed this, but I I know you did speak to lighting. Could you please refresh my memory? Are are there any plans for uh street lamps, or you it, or will there be some sort of downlighting on the building facade?
Well, when you say downlighting, I think of uh architectural aesthetic lighting, uh, and I'll let the architect talk about that. What we're doing for the site is uh looking at, I believe this is A one, the proposed, we have four lights mounted on the front of the building that would light uh the public sidewalk and the the immediate parking spaces. We have four lights mounted on the back of the building, which would light the uncovered parking area. And then we have eight lights mounted under the building to light up the covered parking area. As far as the architectural lighting, again, I'll defer to the architect on that.
Okay, um, also, uh, Mr. Chairman, the uh, the Bradley Beach Fire Department is is in attendance for this meeting and would like a chance to speak. Can they address the engineer as well?
Oh, please do. Yes. Please have them address him.
Not sure who is going to speak on their behalf, but I was just text texted that um someone would like to address us.
Okay.
I think it's Mr. Napoli. Robert N.
I see, but I don't hear
Hello, hello.
Yep, Bob, we hear you.
We did.
And and we heard you. Now you're gone.
Are you there? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Um, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, for allowing us the opportunity to uh speak. My name is Robert Ornappoli. I don't know if I need to be swared in um for testimony. Uh, at this particular point, if this is procedurally correct, we do have some concerns that we'd like to raise um and speak about.
Okay, so, Mr. Napoli, um, this is just questions right now for purposes of um questioning Mr. Fisher's testimony. If you have comments, that has to be at the end of the application, so you can hang in there, or you can ask questions of the engineer slash planner.
No, uh, we'll uh be patient and wait uh for the proper time to uh speak.
That that would be towards the end of the application, so if you can just hang in there, we'll get there.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No problem.
Are are we now open for pub um public questions?
Has everybody from the board had any more questions for them? If not, then we can open to the public.
Okay, Mr. Cohen has had his hand up.
All right, sure. Thomas Cohen, six twelve Third Avenue. Uh, Mr. Fisher, I just have a couple of questions for you. Um, in this picture you're showing here, you show the concrete apron into the twenty-five-foot cartway. Is that correct?
Are you referring to the driveway on Main Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, would it be possible to make that entire driveway concrete so that pedestrians would realize that there there is a potential for cars uh to come from there? I mean, Mr. Naples just developed the perfect perk, and it was done in that fashion. There is a break in the pavers for the concrete apron, and then you go back to pavers on the other side, just to make the pedestrians a little more aware.
Yeah, that that's a good idea, and actually, that was a comment in Jerry Frida's review letter, and we're happy to accommodate that.
Great. I didn't steal that. I want to let you know. I I did, I did have a question about the two stores and the loading zone. Um, since a developer doesn't really know what these are gonna be, um, is there a chance that they could be offices?
Uh, my understanding of the ordinance is uh no. I do not believe that would be. Um, so the zone, I believe, permits it, I think, uh, but the it would require additional parking. So that is not a use that Mr. Naples would offer.
Oh, so it's only a retail use, is what you're saying?
That's correct, which the which this zone uh encourages.
Okay. Um, and then for the uh the fire zone in the back, would it be appropriate to put a no-left-turn sign there? So that when people exit, if they do exit out there, they're going to the right to the stoplight and not through these easements to the left?
You know, there there is or are painted arrows on the alleyway. I I think I might, a a couple of thoughts on that. I think I might rely on those painted arrows. Um, and we also have to remember that we're talking about residents that are gonna know this area. They're gonna know that make a left there. Um, I would have no problem putting up a sign. That's no big deal, but I hesitate to, because if a fire truck is turning, it might just take the sign out.
I understand. And um, because we have the existing streetscape of um streetlights along Main Street, um, the are there any plan for this? There'll be no like decorative streetlights like we have existing on Main Street already?
Uh, whatever is out there would remain. Um, nothing further is proposed other than the lighting along our building.
Okay. Do you think it would be appropriate to to match the street lighting that we have there now and maybe add one or two streetlights?
Uh, I mean, appropriate, that's a, that's a very relative term. It's not required. We're plenty lit. There are existing lights out there, you know. I I don't know if it's called for.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Yep. Is there anybody else from the public to ask questions?
I, yes, uh, Rich Despins.
Please let him in.
Thank you. Rich Despin, six hundred Third Avenue, Bradley Beach. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, first off, uh, Mr. Naples, any comments that I have is certainly not opposing what you've got going here. Um, I'm sure it's gonna be a fine project, and it'll follow your reputation as it has been before, and they everybody would be proud to have that building here. Uh, also, excuse the lack of the uh video. I have a new um computer and it's not compatible with my webcam. Um, the question I have is this. Looking at the bright yellow boundary, uh, which represents the property line, I assume.
Correct.
My question is this. Looking at the two lots, lot nineteen and fourteen, either side of the building, north and south, how does one access structure for maintenance purposes?
The the applicant's proposed structure?
Correct.
Um, well, we have doorways uh for that, so that should be pretty easy to do, but for the nuts and bolts of the answer you're looking for, I'll defer to the architect.
Okay, uh, just in case this is your area here. I I what I'm really talking about is if, for example, if you're gonna paint the side of the building or change a window or fix a wall, how can you do that without going onto the uh other people's property?
Yeah, again, I'll I'll defer to the architect on that.
Okay, thank you very much, and I don't know if this is yours or not either, but this is my last question. Is there an affordable housing component to this?
Not that I'm aware of. If there's a law requiring it, obviously, we comply, but um I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Nice proposal, by the way.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Uh, yes, Cindy Kwakawski.
You, Cindy Kwakawski, two hundred Ocean Park Avenue. Uh, I had a question regarding entry from Main Street through the park to the parking lot. Is that only a the width of for one Is that only the width for one car?
The driveway is a two-way driveway.
Okay. And will there be any signage requiring no left turn so that we ease traffic flow for someone trying to... A left turn only versus trying to go with the traffic to the north? Against traffic to the north?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I follow.
So coming out of the parking lot on Main Street, would there be consideration for a left turn only? So to restrict a person crossing traffic to get to the northbound side, which could cause an increase in traffic?
So I wouldn't recommend that. Couple of things to consider here. First of all, this is a state road. So the flow of traffic along the road is going to be subject to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. And if they have a restriction, we have to follow it. I don't think they'll have it here. In terms of the borough itself, I wouldn't recommend that, because if somebody needs to make a left, but they're not allowed to, and they have to go right, inevitably what they're going to do is make a right and then drive through the neighborhoods to loop around to get back to where they're going. I don't think that Main Street is such a high-volume road, like maybe Route 36 in Ocean Township. You know, that's the kind of road you wouldn't want to be making full movement driveways. But on a road like this, I think it would be appropriate to have a full movement driveway.
Okay. I would disagree, because I've spent a long time waiting to get out of the bank parking lot for just that reason. And the other consideration would be, rather than just the painted line, at least a speed bump to try to slow people from just jetting out. Typically, when people stop, they stop beyond a stop sign and slow down. So that would be my recommendation. Additionally, I just wanted to go back to the affordable housing. I did think that we had an ordinance that addressed that. And so if you could comment on that any further, thank you.
Yeah, if there's...
Jason, I don't, I think it's more of a legal question. But my understanding is, and obviously Ms. Kwawski or anybody else can correct me, that there has not been a plan that's been approved through ordinance and then through COA, creating any kind of Mount Laurel Trust Fund or requiring any kind of contribution. I think there's a proposed ordinance some time ago. But I don't know that it exists. Obviously, anything that did exist by ordinance, you know, we have to comply with, we'll comply with. But I don't believe there is anything unless somebody has information to the contrary. I couldn't find it. I found a proposed ordinance, but nothing else.
Typically, we would review the situation with Ms. Beam, who is the planner. She's also the COA expert. We do have some... There has been some past issues with regard to COA and how it's approached based on our ordinance. So that would be carefully reviewed. And if it's found to be appropriate, then it will be assessed to the applicant.
Yeah, if the legal basis is in place for it, you know, obviously, we'll deal with it.
Okay, Chrissy, is there anybody else waiting?
Just checking to see if there's any physical hands. I don't see any virtual hands. Nope, none.
Mr. Hirsch, do you have another?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, excuse me, it's Jerry Frida.
Sorry.
Just for the record, I know it was discussed in my letter, but could the engineer just maybe comment on the things in my letter?
Because... That's what I was just going to do, Jerry.
Okay, yeah. Because Mr. Cohen had asked some questions that are actually in my letter that, you know, if you guys would agree to address those, that is the driveway entrance and even the street lighting, because we do have streetscape requirements. So we'd like to try to get that on the record.
Yes, Jerry, I was just, I realized we hadn't touched on everything, and I was just going to go through that with Jason.
Great, thank you.
Sure, thank you for bringing it back up. I think we've covered just about everything in the report, but there are a few items that Ms. Frida's report said, you know, provide some testimony on, explanation on. And that's what I want. I'm not going to go through all of it where we comply, comply, comply. You know, there's no point in doing that. We've covered that. But I think... I'm just trying to see what we didn't cover. We'd covered the signage issue. On drainage, engrading on a paragraph four of the report, page four, Jason did cover the manner in which the drainage would be held, would be taken care of in a paragraph B. Jerry's comment is, "The applicant has reduced the post development runoff rates for the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year storm events, and then testimony should be provided."
I did that.
Yeah, I think you've covered exactly how that was going to work.
I think under the drainage section, the only thing Jerry might be looking for is confirmation that we'll provide soil logs prior to construction.
Yeah, that was the next paragraph, right.
We're happy to do that.
And well, on paragraph D, we will provide, you know, the soil logs, Jerry. You know, but you need...
Environmental we covered.
Yeah, the environmental, that's why I had Mr. Naples go through that in the beginning as to the Phase 1, Phase 2. And that each one of those items that are mentioned, the storage tanks, floor drains, all of that's covered in the Phase 2 as finding no evidence of any contamination whatsoever on the floor drain issue, the lifts, the storage tanks that were removed. And the lead was, you know, the lead, i.e. gasoline, lead, you know, unleaded. And all those came up clean on all the testing that was done. You know, the asbestos, obviously, if the building's demolished, before they can do it, they have to identify any asbestos. And then naturally, they would retain a certified asbestos removal company to remove any asbestos that was there. You need anything else on that, Jerry? Or do you think we've covered that from Mr. Naples' testimony?
No.
And obviously, the document submitted.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next one is paragraph 6E, just confirming that the refuse area is 10 by 17. There's an inconsistency on the plans. We'll fix that.
And the height of that wall, Jason.
The wall, you talk about the refuse?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yep, six feet. Yep, well, I meant six. It's got to be on the plans. You're right. Yep.
The pavers, we talked about the driveway. That's going to be a concrete.
Yeah, there's... 7A talks about how the pavers are placed within the sidewalk. We'll comply with that. And then there's a later comment about changing the driveway to concrete, which we will do.
Thank you.
And then he asked for a comment about the shade trees being proposed along Main Street. I know you did give some testimony. I don't know if you were looking for the type of tree or the caliper of it, but whatever the ordinance requires for shade trees, I guess. But if there's some preference, I don't know, Jerry, you can let us know. We'll comply with whatever the preference is.
No, and that's fine. I just, I know you wanted to save the one tree. I'm not 100% sure of its condition. But if it's deemed to be not in good condition, would you also replace that fourth tree?
Sure.
Okay.
And then what you kind of led into about the lighting, it says, "When the owner along Main Street wishes to install the architectural building lighting," you know, it should comply with, you know, the type of architectural lighting designated by the borough. We weren't proposing any new... I mean, you heard the lighting on the building, but not those kind of lamp posts weren't being proposed.
No, I understand. The difference, though, is the existing site is all, is pretty much 90% depressed curb for driveway access. So there was no way you could put the lights in there. The new plan, you're going to have a controlled access point. So we could add a lighter to, if it works with the rest of Main Street. And if you guys would agree to do that for us, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. In other words, like around where the entrance is and the exit, I mean, the egress and ingress, that area?
No, something in line with the trees, like pedestrian lights that are typical to our Main Street. Like posts. You know, quite like we did at other sites, Giamano's and that type of thing.
All right. So do we submit a detail on it? Or is that something already spelled out in the ordinance as to the type of lighting?
Well, the borough has a make and model, and we'll try to stick with that if we can. Yes.
Okay. I think then on the last page, which also dealt with the concrete apron, the general comments. The architect will deal with that restroom issue, that that was, I think it is on the plan. Or, you know, there was some mix up there. But yes, there is a restroom, but he'll address that. Obviously, the others are before construction. You know, naturally, all of those things before construction will get all the necessary permits, et cetera. I think John Naples, he indicated that, I don't think it's the postmaster who determines the mailing address in Bradley Beach, but we will confirm those apartment mailing addresses.
Actually, I think I sent you a letter, Tom, saying that...
You did send it to me, but I don't know if the borough had it. Go ahead, John, you can...
I was told by the postmaster they don't assign addresses. That's up to the tax assessor. And then there was an issue with addresses on a subdivision about two years ago. And the chief Guido wants to get involved. So I actually spoke to both of them, and they both agreed that 811 would be the address.
Obviously, I think everything else is just pro forma, construction permits, you know, performance guarantees, et cetera. Naturally, we will comply. Was there anything else? Did I miss anything, Jerry, that you wanted us to address?
Nope, that's everything that's in the letter, and that satisfies my request.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Fichter.
Do you have another witness for us?
Yes, we'll call the architect and ask Mr. Brazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brazinski, I can't see you. So do you swear that the evidence that you give should be the whole truth? The truth?
Yes.
The truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your name for the record and your location, sir?
It's Brian Brazinski. I'm the owner of Grasso Design Group, which is located at 231 Highway 71 in Manasquaw, New Jersey.
And your credentials, please?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. And although I haven't testified in front of this board before, I have testified in front of boards in surrounding areas, including Delmar and Neptune City and plenty of others in the local flavor.
Mr. Rosenthal, Chair Rosenthal, do you accept Mr. Brazinski's credentials, please?
I do. Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Brian, you were retained by the applicant to prepare the architectural plans that are before the board tonight or your firm?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what we're showing, I think you put up, is what we submitted as A3.
Yes, it is.
And just to address a question that came up previously by one of the board members about looking at, I think it was Mr. Wardeman, about the prior plan with showing a lot more signage. Would you just first address that signage issue and how that exhibit now is displayed?
Yeah, I mean, basically, again, with not necessarily knowing the proposed tenants that were going to be taking up the spaces, we have a number of doorway openings, some that go into storage spaces for the building itself, some that go into these retail spaces. And for that matter, we would restrict so that, you know, typically, there would be only one sign above a retail space as well as possibly some type of building signage. And it would just be up to the tenant that inhabits the space as to the layout of the interior to possibly decide which door might have the signage over it as well as how exactly they conform to the ordinance for that signage.
All right. Before I have you just go through the, you know, essential design of the building and makeup of the materials and the floor plan, there was a question in Mr. Frida's report about a restroom that wasn't shown. Could you address that?
Yeah, I know, we had modified our drawing slightly to indicate where a potential restroom may be, but in a similar condition as with the signage, without knowing the retail tenant as to whether their preference might be to have a bathroom located on one side versus the other, we just figure for each space, they would have an ADA accessible restroom. And we show examples now of where those potentially could be located in the retail space. But of course, per the, you know, submittal of the actual tenant plan, they would have to provide the physical location as to where they prefer, and that would have to be approved by the township.
All right. Why don't you, if you would, just take us through or take the board and the public through the, you know, through the building, the materials proposed, how it's designed, you know, on the first floor and then the upper floors for the apartments?
All right. So as we all kind of spoke of earlier, the ground floor component has multiple facets to it. We have the two retail spaces that are located on the first floor with access from Main Street. We have a main general foyer with elevator access to the upper residential floors that also has access from both the Main Street sidewalk as well as from the covered rear parking lot. Then we have two auxiliary fire staircases that egress out onto Main Street as a means of getting in and out for the tenants, which also have access to corridors that come in from the rear parking area as well as some storage spaces for the tenants themselves. We kind of divided up a little bit of tenant storage space based upon use with the idea that a ground floor tenant storage area might be useful for accessible things like bicycles that would be brought out to Main Street and utilized on the sidewalk area as well as providing something near the main lobby space. And additionally, actually incorporating a ground floor foundation basement area that could be utilized for some excess general storage by all the tenants, while another basement space would be for some of the mechanical equipment that would be hidden from the streetscape. Going just through the remainder of the ground floor plan, you see the parking spaces that are in tandem, basically dedicated to each apartment individually because of the two-part requirement. That would be accessed via a, similar to a residential driveway, where two cars can...
Are you going through different renderings? Because I only see one. I am looking at the plans. I don't know if other people have them in front of them.
The plan that I have is the architectural plan that was submitted to the township. It was the two sheets.
Right, right.
On the screen.
Are they sharing them on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, because I only see one.
Oh, it's paused. Hold on.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else is having the same problem.
I think you're right, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
Better?
Yep.
Okay.
Is anybody else okay?
Good. So just to reflect back on the ground floor layout, we have the staircases, residential, storage, foyer, the retail, another storage and access up, and the tandem parking spaces that we were just highlighting. Did you guys see the foundation plan with the basement?
No, you might just go back to that so everybody else can see it too.
Yeah, it's just two small basement areas located under the building. One would be utilized for mechanical space to shelter that away from the streetscape as well as the other one being used for general storage for the residences above. The other storage that I highlighted on the first floor, ground floor plan, was a storage area near one of the staircases that exited out to Main Street for possible bicycles and such, and another one near the main foyer lobby space. The, just going back to the end conversation about the parking situation. So we have the tandem parking spaces where they would pull out in a fashion of a residential driveway. So each apartment unit has both spaces in parallel. Then the two handicap spaces that are being provided that aren't dedicated to any of the apartments above, and the walking lanes that are adjacent to the building for access into the foyer as well as access into the auxiliary stairwells that go up to the residences above. So now going to the residential floors, which are, we'll call them the first, second, and third floors of the residences, all mirror images of each other. They are stacked with the typical apartment layout. that has a main living space, as well as two bedroom spaces and some auxiliary bathroom spaces with a centralized hallway, elevator that's accessible to all floors, and stairwells that are accessible to each floor on the way up. Now going to the elevation drawings. Just from the front, I believe this was what Mo's mentioned earlier about the signage, just because we were unclear as to which retail component would wanna take over which doorway as the main entry. We would, as the rendering shows, limited, obviously, for one signage per retail space, with one being the access to the lobby area for the residences. Otherwise, there is a mixture of materials that obviously were, were given based upon keeping a, a similar design aesthetic so that it appears as, you know, one, one principal structure while varying some of the materials and colors and some of the jogs, which is highlighted better in the color rendering, just to illustrate that it's a unified structure, but it has broken down into separate elements, pretty much based upon the different areas where the, the apartment uses are gonna be broken down into with, you know, balconies for each unit that are all stacked. And going down to the, the rear and the side elevations now, we have a very similar design facing that quote-unquote alleyway, where we have the, the same structure with the balconies and most of our fenestrations and the facade with the, the windows for the bedrooms and the living space, as well as the parking areas down below. And then on the side of the building, specifically because we knew that the one adjacent lot was deeded into being a parking lot, we wanted to take that into consideration when we were designing the fenestrations. So, as opposed to going right up to the property line as we did in two portions of the element of the design, we took an area of the upper floor plan and actually jogged it inward to illustrate some fenestrations with some windows. That was a conscious effort, knowing that this adjacent property as a parking lot may never be developed as a building. And for, therefore, it was of interest to create a facade that was a little bit untypical of a downtown scenario because, you know, most often times when we're dealing with property lots that have zero lot lines, you know, you could potentially have a, you know, similar four-story building adjacent to us, and therefore, no windows would be allowed. But by jogging the building in, in, we've at least created the opportunity to have some fenestrations and have some architectural interest because there is nothing there and potentially might not be. I think that's pretty much most of the exterior elevations.
And can you go back to the, the elevation where it shows the elevator access from the ground floor?
The elevation of the floor plan.
Yes, with us floor plan, sorry.
Okay.
Hmm, yeah. So your elevator access is in the egress area? That's what it's looking like, or is that incorrect, or is that in the foyer?
No, this is in the foyer. So we have, this rectangular foyer right here is got openings that lead out to Main Street sidewalk over here, as well as to underneath the parking area for the resident access. This elevator shaft right here has an entry that leads up to each of those residential floors.
And those are keyed accesses?
To get into the building.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Where would you be putting the mailboxes, or is that?
Well, we do, we do have an access of this foyer space to start laying out design as to where we might have some keyed mailboxes, as to whether or not they would desire to have any package-type drop-off areas or anything like that. We would be discussing to figure out where everything would be located in here. But we gotta, we got a pretty decently sizable foyer for some of that space.
Okay. Does anybody from the board?
Brian, let me just do one follow-up question. You did mention mechanical equipment in the basement. I know there was a question by someone in the public audience about, about mechanical equipment. So, how is the mechanical equipment laid out for the building?
Yeah, so, as, as mentioned earlier, there is gonna be mechanical equipment that is located down below in that basement area. But there's gonna also have to be a requirement for some outdoor units. So part of the design of the facade here is right around this line somewhere would be the height of the proposed roof structure. And we do have parapet walls that are in our design going up to the building height that allow us to screen those equipment that will be located on the flat roof behind that.
I think the other question from the public was, because of the proximity to property lines, which of course, there are zero lot lines on the zoning ordinance, how would repairs be handled? You know, I think Jason deferred that to you. I think essentially that was the question.
Yeah, I think that generally speaking, obviously, there is development in, you know, this town amongst other towns with a zero lot line. I mean, right now, as I mentioned earlier about the one facade that's adjacent to the parking lot, we've gone to some lengths to beautify that because we imagine it could be left as a parking lot for some time. But I mean, typically speaking, we do have to have on the adjacent property line where we're near that zero lot, we have to be able to build and maintain a particular fire rating so that it wouldn't go from building to building. So that is done and constructed in a manner that we obviously maintain the original construction on our property when, when building it. And in fact, I don't know if Jason wants to attest to this at all, but I believe that the adjacent structure might even be poking onto our property a little bit, and that's why we had to kind of pull that side of the building in a little bit, just to make sure that we weren't infringing upon the building that they have that already exists on our property.
Apparently, there is a easement from, you know, past history. When somebody picked up that encroachment, they allowed an easement to allow the encroachment to continue. But as I understand it, that easement provides that if that existing building ever goes away, that easement goes away for the encroachment. But there is, there was a building encroachment there from the neighbor. That's, I think that's all the questions I have of the architect. Open them up to the board.
Does anybody from the board have any questions?
Yeah, Mark, I do.
Al, please go ahead.
Yes, thanks. Mr. Brazinski, the storage units that you pointed out to us, that you said could be used for, by specifically bicycles or other, you know, other activities. Can, can you share any more guidance as to how you, how that space might be allocated, you know, to your tenants? Is there some sort of methodology that's proposed that everyone will have a certain amount of space within the storage area?
Well, I think that the way that we have it set up now is yes, yes or noing in a kind of fashion where like bicycle storage, for example, I don't think that it would be necessary to provide lockers or something, or cages in order to enclose them, but it is something that you might be able to bring in and lock up your bike. And the reason that we propose that on the ground floor versus just proposing something like basement or internal apartment storage is because, you know, it, it is cumbersome to bring items like that up and downstairs or through elevators or anything. So having this on-street storage area became more accessible for that bicycle slash beach stair storage. The auxiliary storage that's down below in the basement could much easier be divided up for more just, you know, bulk excess storage that a tenant might have that they couldn't include in their own space.
But would you envision, what I'm, what I'm wrestling with is, there's, there doesn't appear to be much storage for the individual apartment units. I was just wondering if there would be allocated storage so that every unit would have so many square feet.
Yeah, down in the basement, we can envision breaking it up. I mean, this, this entire area of the building is basement that is basically open to that type of allocation. The smaller section of basement over on this side would be for that. Would, we'd be mainly geared towards the mechanical scenario.
That would be something the landlord developer would ultimately address in his leases. You know, if people, you know, wanted to have storage space, how he wants to deal with that as additional space, additional charge, free, whatever, you know, that's usually something negotiated with landlord tenants. But that's, the design was premised on having that additional storage space. That's, that's why the basement was designed that way.
Well, one thing I really admire is, is how you have put together the parking to make sure that, you know, only met requirements, but actually had, still have two additional spaces after making concessions for our fire department. I was actually wondering if there was even an opportunity to utilize some of that space to create bicycle storage. Just because more and more, we, we have residents who are trying to avoid driving around and creating additional, you know, density for the, for the boroughs. So, to the extent, that was something to be considered, I just wanted to throw it out there.
Al, I believe they gave those two spots to the fire department. I don't think there's any extra.
Well, I, I can speak in respect to that because we, originally, based upon the design and what we're required, we actually had four additional spaces. Two of those, however, are the handicap spaces that we are locating here, as we did not designate the handicap spaces for particular apartment use. So the two that we gave up were two of the four, the other two are the handicap.
Okay, thank you, I, I'll move on. The, you mentioned that you'd have mechanicals on the roof, and my question is, how will they be accessed?
So typically, we have an access from usually like a stairwell area that has a ladder access to the, to a hatch that then goes up to the rooftop.
Can you show us where that would be on the, you know, in the, your design?
So, in this plan, either of these stairwells can include a rooftop hatch that would then walk up and exit onto the rooftop, that they can go in the intermediate central space as the parapet walls screen access from the perimeter.
So that is the plan to, to include that rooftop access?
Yes, there would be rooftop access.
And, one last question I had, it's, there, there seem to be a, a large number of doors on the front facade opening into the sidewalk. And as I, I realize a number of them are, are a necessity. The two that I was wondering if there was something we could do to just minimize the number of, you know, potential, potential accidents of folks walking into, opening doors. Is, is there a consideration that could be given to not having the storage area doors open up into the sidewalks?
Yeah, no, we, I mean, we could definitely give consideration to that. I mean, the two premise for the, the reasons why we came up with that layout was, like I mentioned before, if it was a bicycle, for example, it would be easy access in and out from the building to the sidewalk. But understandably, there are, there are doorways for a lot of different spaces, and we could work on the, the treatment. I don't know that we would necessarily wanna get rid of any type of opening because we still wanna maintain an aesthetic on the ground floor facade. But we would definitely consider, you know, moving some of the doorways around to minimize that.
I was thinking it could be a window instead of a doorway, but.
Correct.
Minimize the number of, you know, doors opening into the sidewalk.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the board, does any questions?
Yeah, I do. It's less of a question and more of a concern that maybe you can help talk me through. I just wanna say thank you first for working with our fire department on that easement so they can get the trucks out. But I do have major concerns with the tandem parking. From personal experience, I know that trying to coordinate schedules for tandem parking gets to be too complicated, which usually leaves one of the roommates or partners parking on the street or somewhere else because it's just too complicated to be moving these cars all the time. So coupling that with the lack of the loading zone, I'm, I'm just really concerned about an excess of cars now being parked on Main Street and in North Bradley Beach that already has some parking issues.
Well, I mean. I don't know if Jason wants to handle that.
I had to find the unmute button, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, you know, this is becoming more and more common. We, we've done this in Bradley Beach before, we're seeing it in, in a lot of towns throughout the area. And it makes a lot of planning sense. It sprawl is a concern, this is one of the strategies that helps pull in paving areas. The fact that the two parking spaces are assigned to a particular unit makes it manageable. If, if there are two cars in that unit, it can be planned. I hear what you're saying, some people aren't great at planning. But what we find is in situations.
Some people's schedules don't coordinate either. It's not just people's lack of planning, sir. Sometimes it's about scheduling and other conflicts.
Sure, but what we find with, with situations like this is it often polices itself because if you have a parking spin, off-street parking space here dedicated for your unit, but whatever, schedules or lack of plan, whatever the case may be, and it's not working, and you say, ah, the heck with it, I'm just gonna park out in the street, and then you park a few buildings down, eventually you're gonna say, you know what, we could do better than this. Well, we can make this work. You know, we could pull one car out, pull the other one out, we can put them in the order we need them to be. That's what we typically find with these tandem spaces when they're dedicated to a, a specific unit.
That hasn't been my personal experience, but I, what, what Bradley Beach currently has this setup? Cause I think that would be helpful.
I think you referred to as the GeoMonos property had it?
Oh, so nothing built yet?
Correct.
To be able to use as an example, okay, thank you.
Me, maybe there's others, but that's just me. I don't know about the red building, if they have it, but that's just me.
That's what I wasn't sure if you were talking about, that's why I was wondering, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Is there anybody else from the board?
Don't see anyone.
No.
You can go to public questions?
Yes. Let's go to public, please.
Mr. Colan?
Mr. Brazinski, I was wondering, what, what are the exterior finish of the building? Could you describe that for us?
Yeah, so in order to create a somewhat cohesive, but also break up the facade, we did a coordination of multiple materials. We have some lower-level materials that include some, you know, stones that help, you know, bring the foundation of the commercial application, as well as, you know, far as building maintenance and security, keep things well put together. And then mixed it in with a series of varied materials that includes shakes, as well as some horizontal clapboards, just to try to break up the facade and the depth of the different levels that we're, as we transition from one element to another, and it steps back. We tried to transition that with a material change, as well as potential color changes. We also included areas that have a standing seam metal design and others that have a residential asphalt chingle design in order to kind of mix and marry multiple materials in the facade.
And then in terms of the shake and the clabbered, what are the base materials for those, for that design?
Like the actual material of the shakes?
Yeah.
Well, I would, I don't know that we specifically picked out those materials yet. We just worked on the design as the aesthetics as to what it would look like.
Okay, so you don't know if it would be a vinyl or a hardy board product, or a cement product?
Not yet, I would leave that up to the development.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the board, from the public?
I'm just checking for some physical hands, I don't see any.
If I may, through the chair. The question raised about the materials was a good one. And I think it's one that the board really needs to know more about. We really don't wanna leave it to a later date and not have any recourse. So, what thoughts do you have on those materials? Cause we wanna lock you into something, so.
Are you handy?
Yeah, me.
You have any, any thoughts on that?
We were thinking certainty vinyl siding. Like, like Brian said, some, some. Like, like, um, uh, Brian said, some, some cedar impressions, some double four clapboard, AZAC window surrounds, uh, AZAC around the, you know, all the, uh, the gables. It's all going to be maintenance free.
Okay, and how about the stone? Is it brick? Is, you know, what, what are we talking?
Uh, it's a, it's a gray brick.
And that brick is intended to just be sort of on the lower level?
Yes, the lower level and then wrapping around where the stairwell is on.
Okay, and standing seam roof as the architect said.
Right.
Colors to kind of mimic your elevation or your?
To match the black asphalt group.
Okay, and, and just a real quick question. The balconies, how big are they? And are they like a Juliet balcony? What's the?
They're very small.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those, those balconies do project outward from the building as they're not a Juliet. So you do have the potential to go out there, but it is only approximately, uh, I want to say four feet. So it's not like a table and chairs type of scenario.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
I'm not seeing any.
Mark, I'd like, can I ask one more question? I'm looking at this facade and I had a question about the doors.
Please do.
Am I mistaken? Is the one door, the, uh, to the immediate left of the parking entrance, is that recessed?
Yes, it is.
And that seems to be the only door that's recessed. I, I love that design because I, I'm really concerned about doors opening up into the sidewalk. Is that, why is that there and is, and could that be replicated in any of the other doorways?
Well, this is the location for the residential access. And just as a design point, when we were coming up with the facade and the footprint, uh, we, we liked the idea of recessing the entryway to the residence so that it didn't appear similar to those of the retail space. Um, in an effort, obviously, to make it feel like it's a little bit unique or different. Um, could that be employed in some of the other areas that we have like access to a storage area or something in order to pull that off the streetscape so that the retail components are really the doors that, that open directly out? We could explore that as long as it works in conjunction with some of our, um, connecting points between the storage areas and the stairwells and such.
I also, I mean, I know it's an illustration, but I also do like the look of the light posts that you've included here. Although we might have a different style, I, I like the look. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any other questions? I guess not.
Is there anyone? A lot of people are not participating with video. So if they're speaking, they're muted, so we don't hear you. So if you need to speak up, make sure you unmute yourself.
Mr. Chair, do you want to move to public comment?
Yes, please move to public comment then.
Is there any member of the public at this time who wishes to comment in general about the application, please?
Yes, could you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Yeah, Robert?
Yes, yes. Good evening. For the record, uh, Robert Napoli, uh, I represent the Bradley Beach membership in my authority as vice president. Uh, tonight, we are not represented by council and feel that there is no need to do so at this time. Likewise, the fire department, consistent in a United Engine and Truck Company, has no interest in opposing the pros, the proposed plan informed by Mr. Naples. Uh, in essence, we're a volunteer organization that has existed for 120 years in this borough, serving the public good, protecting the good people of Bradley Beach with fire department response in times of emergency and performing community services such as parades, Santa Claus runs, and many other activities throughout the year. We consider ourselves the roots of the community that have been housed behind this new proposed development for over 20 years. We, the membership, sort of knew when the time came that this property would be reda, redeveloped. And we accepted that fact, uh, as alluded by the applicant's counsel. Our intent for intending this meeting this evening is to speak of specific challenges we face with this proposed plan. These challenges are obvious to the fire department and we feel we have reasonable, uh, nexus to the public good concerning our ability to respond to emergency calls. Let me begin by reiterating, we do not oppose this plan. Mr. Naples is a member of this community and has been supportive over the years to the volunteer organization that we all belong to. We believe that there's a mutual respect to this, uh, to this existing fire department's location and the activity that takes place at the fire department, along with Mr. Naples' motivation to develop this project. We do not stand in a way of progress and in the same light, we don't want to compromise our ability to respond or be confronted with undue hardship in the future from this development. As Mr. Fitcher indicated in his testimony, there was a brief meeting with the applicant, Mr. Naples, the chief of the fire department, John Zek, and the members of this department. This meeting was frankly productive. Allow me to be specific to the nature of challenges that are of concern to the Bradley Beach Fire Department and United Engine and Truck Company. The first concern is that being of the continued right to unobstructed access for the fire apparatus. And the second being the noise issues that preexisted long before the proposed plan was developed. Testa, excuse me, testimony provided by Mr. Fitcher moots the access issue. Mr. Naples and the site engineer are on the right track with the rear of the property per turning radius of our fire trucks. And we believe that, uh, is being addressed proactively. We appreciate that, Mr. Naples, and thank you. The second concern is noise, consisting of and not limited to the fire engine and aerial apparatus and the diesel smell that is emanated from those particular vehicles. And more importantly, a major concern is their emergency warning siren. The fire and EMS warning siren is that issue. It's loud, it's got a piercing high frequency sound that has the potential to create a myriad of issues. This deafening ear splitting device could, could potentially provide potential harm to, to the residents in that building. We do not know that because no engineering study has been completed. The emergency siren has a, always been notorious, been a subject of debate in this borough. Um, as political wind shifts emerged, policy changed with the use of the siren. So that we're clear on the record, the current policy at, 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 at current for this particular month is, is that the siren sounds only once a month or during fire calls for a specific nature. If a fire call, for example, were to come in, a test wouldn't occur in that particular month because we would consider that a test. However, when you place it in totality, the EMS has about 50 calls a month. The fire department has about 18. Uh, so what I'd like to explain, uh, that is a major concern here is, is that this siren, we believe, is either going to have to be relocated or it's going to have to be discontinued. Uh, we believe that, uh, fire department response would be compromised if, if it was removed from, from service. We worry about that and this may be the cause and effect of this particular development. The proposed development is 40 feet high, I believe. That was testimony. The issue of this siren, um, as example, and I know everybody's a layperson out there and so am I when it comes to this. But the specification and amicature of this particular device produces a 70 dB, uh, sound at close to a mile and a quarter. If you're within proximity of that siren at that height, we don't know what the potential harm could be. Secondly, because of the height of the building, the siren rotates on a omnidirectional access. When it is pointed directly at the building, we don't know what the potential harm or what the reflection rate will be with the sound. It could, it could, in fact, penetrate deep into Neptune where we would receive noise complaints from that. So I don't know how we're going to address this particular issue. Now, Mr. Naples, um, uh, in our meeting, we did mention the fact that there could be some arrangement where there was some type of sepsity, money placed aside for the relocation of this device. That would have to be borne and decided by the council and not the fire department, which gives us great concern. Uh, I, I, I would like somehow to address that particular issue. I know that in closing, that council for the applicant indicated that it wasn't an issue. It is an issue. When it comes to our feelings of fire department response and the potential harm to the residents in that building or the discomfort that may result from the sounding of that siren, we do share the same concern. Thank you.
Well, uh, perhaps I should first respond on behalf of the client. I want Mr. Naples to respond. When I said it wasn't an issue, um, obviously, I think it's been clear by Mr. Naples' testimony and exactly what he's been willing to do, uh, which there is nothing legally that obligates him to do it. Uh, to provide, uh, the additional easement area, if you will, or turn area for the trucks coming on his property. Apparently those trucks are probably coming on to that property right now without any rights. But, uh, he certainly is a long supporter of the volunteer fire department and resident of this town and a, they already noted a contributor. So we certainly don't take lightly the, uh, job and public service provided by that entity. My comments are to this application. This is, uh, an application to the planning board for a site plan approval and for one, what we believe very minor variance, for a fully conforming development. This site, uh, is zoned for this. We meet every zoning requirement. That's why we wanted to come in variance free, other than the loading zone, which we've explained. So that was my point when I said it's not an issue. In my view, it's not an issue for this board. Uh, I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be some discussion between the applicant, the fire department. Mr. Naples has already done that, sat down with him. Uh, he, uh, has indicated that there was some discussion about relocation. Uh, he can't control that. He can't control what the governing body may or may not want to do. He suggested if he has details, he'd be willing to work with them and as to some, uh, contribution. But certainly that is something that affects the entire borough, not just my client, uh, or his property. So he has a right to develop the property, he or anybody else who bought this property in accordance with your ordinances. That's what he's done. So these issues, uh, are, are beyond his control. He can work with them and contribute, but as, as was just indicated, perhaps the municipality has to take certain actions. The, the question of, well, how it might affect his tenants or users, well, you know, it's like when people, developers buy property next to the railroad tracks. Uh, and they say, well, we're going to have those loud trains coming by. Am I going to be able to sell my units or rent my units? Uh, Mr. Naples, obviously, is, uh, you know, is a native of this town. He very well knows the situation with the fire department, but yet purchased this property, uh, for this development. So he's aware of the impacts and what tenants may or may not, uh, you know, perceive as an incentive or non-incentive to, uh, to rent at this property. But they're not issues, uh, for a planning board to decide respectfully. But I want Mr. Naples to address, because I know he has thought about the sound issues and I know he's, uh, going to be taking some actions relative to that in terms of the construction of the building. So John, uh, please feel free to address the sound issue or anything else that you've, because you're the one who took part in these discussions. Uh, I just had to play my lawyer role and give some positions legally on it. Go ahead.
We made a conscious, uh, decision to purchase this property. We, we know about the horn. We know about the train in the back. I mean, we know about, uh, the nightlife on Main Street. Um, we plan on doing soundproof windows. We plan on researching how we could soundproof the building a little bit better. Pretty much the 706 Lorraine Avenue. I mean, that horn turns in four directions, I believe. So they're getting directly hit with that, plus the banquet hall. And there's a waiting list for those apartments as well as the frame. So I think people, I think that we made a conscious decision. And usually when I go into a neighborhood, I mean, always when I go into a neighborhood, I try not to change the neighborhood. I just do what I do and I try to leave it better than when I got there. And that's pretty much the way I operate. I would never force the fire department or to borrow any grief from something I did. Well, a decision that I made to purchase a piece of property.
Robert, I have a question. How, how far is the horn in distance from the red building? I don't know the address, to John's building?
I couldn't give you a specific, uh, measurement, uh, but I could safely say it's within 150 feet.
So they're both, you'd be at the same distance then, roughly?
I'm sorry?
They'd both be about the same distance?
I don't have a, I don't understand your point of measurement with same distance.
I'm just wondering how far the red building is to the siren as opposed to John's building to the siren?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, there would probably be twice, three times the distance. Uh, but you're talking about a difference in height. Uh, that building is three stories. Uh, and I believe our rotation doesn't go pointing at that particular building.
And how high is?
Rotation on, on the, uh, on the siren, which starts in the northerly direction and then it, it tends to swing to the south. The purpose of the siren is to emanate a decibel level at the beachfront. And the point that I raise, um, in all due respect to counselors equating a locomotive to a, a housing complex is, uh, is, is not really relevant here. A locomotive doesn't create the potential for injury. That is our concern with a decibel rating on a flat-ended building that this siren would be directly pointing at. Secondly, the other issue is the emanating noise from the siren. Will it be able to reach the intended target for which it was originally designed with the building in the way? There's, there's, these are the complex issues. And I understand the challenges that, that, uh, Mr. Naples faces with, uh, the right to develop his property to the highest and best use. Once again, we don't stand in the way of that. We does, do not want, and I don't know who represents the borough on our behalf, to be facing potential lawsuits. Or our job is to protect the interest of the people to create harm unduly to those people because of our need or necessity for that siren.
Mr. Napoli, if I, if I may, you know, and I, and I have to apologize because you, you mentioned, of course, you're the, uh, vice president of the Bradley Beach membership. And is that, is that a corporation or an LLC or how is it, how is it formed?
It's a 501(c)(3).
501(c)(3), okay. So it, it, you know, it's always a difficult situation when, you know, we have members of the public who come. And I know you made a statement that, you know, you, you did not, um, you did not feel that you required counsel. But, you know, as a 50, a 501(c)(3) corporation, you know, if you are here as a representative, any type of corporation LLC, um, or any type of, of, of person who is representing a body requires counsel to appear. And although you've said you're not objecting, you know, to, to the application in and of itself, you know, you're, you're in essence raising concerns that may be objectionable. So while I can say that you can speak on your own behalf, you really don't have the authority based on the fact that you do not have legal counsel with you to represent the entire membership. So I understand your concerns as a citizen. Um, and certainly you're bringing some very valid points. And I think, you know, the types of issues that you're talking about would really then go back to, you know, the ownership of the property that you in, who then maintains the siren and things of that nature. the siren and things of that nature. Because unless you are coming in as a serious objector to this application, I have to agree with Mr. Hirsch that there is no legal obligation on behalf of the applicant to deal with your siren. It's considered, you know, it's there, and perhaps the neighbors would see it as a nuisance. But there are other, you know, multifamily properties in that area, not multifamily, but multi-use properties, better word. So I understand your concerns. I just, I just really need you to understand the distinction that in this situation, you're really speaking more for yourself than for the organization. So I just need the board to take that into consideration, okay?
Well, I believe I represent, excuse me, I believe I represent the organization in the spirit and the intent of the membership, as well as, we're also a part of the borough, which is, gives us the right, the authority as borough agents within the borough.
Absolutely not, because if you're now telling me that you're a member of the borough, then you would be covered by borough council, and you would have had to have taken these concerns to Mr. Cannon, who represents the borough, to come here to appear on your behalf. So that's what I'm saying, your concerns, depending on who maintains the building, who maintains the siren, are direct borough concerns. So...
I hear what you're saying. We never received this. This just came to our attention in the last week, so there was no time to speak to the borough attorney. That's no excuse. But I would believe that as a corporation that is housed in that building, notice should have been presented so that we could have, in well in advance, addressed this issue with the borough council or the borough itself.
Well, typically, Mr. Napoli, typically, Mr. Napoli, the property owner is noticed. So if the corporation does not own the property, the tenant would not be entitled to the notice. So I understand exactly what you're saying, but once again, as a corporation, you know, if you wanted to come, then you should have come here with legal counsel, because what I'm telling you is, you can raise these concerns, but you're raising them as a private citizen. If you have objections on behalf of your organization, then your organization needs to come here with counsel, or you can take those matters directly up to the municipality itself.
I understand.
Mr. Hirsch, does that satisfy any issue you may have as well?
I think, I appreciate a counsel, the comments. I mean, we understand the expression of those concerns, but as I stated, and I believe you agree, this is really not a planning board issue as to this particular development. We're not seeking any variances that affect the adjoining property, the fire department. So therefore, that's why I say I don't think that issue is applicable to this application. We understand the concerns. I'm not trying to minimize anything he's said, but legally, it's just not part of this case. It's not our job to worry about, as you said, how the siren works doesn't work, that's on their property, not ours.
Mr. Hirsch, this is Al Gubatose. Just as I listen to the legal debate, and I do appreciate it, I'm not sure if it's all that much different than the fact that Mr. Naples has already been willing to work with our fire department to provide access. So for that same reason, in fact, as you may recall, one of my early questions in this discussion, I did ask about the siren, because I was, I only knew there was an issue, I did not know the nature of the issue. But Mr. Naples, I believe at that time, said he had already expressed some willingness to try to work with the borough, he just needed greater specificity. So, Mr. Naples, could you just elaborate on to what degree you'd be willing to work with the borough? I mean, how do you envision moving forward on that issue?
Well, I explained to them that I would contribute in the expense of either moving it or whatever they have to do with it. Mr. Napoli also brought up the point that they can replace that siren with one that isn't as loud as the one that's there. They said they can't control the volume of this siren that's there right now. But they said they would either want to move it, or they would want to buy a newer one that they can control the volume of. And I said, either way, I'd be very happy to contribute financially and whatever I can do to help. But I have to have more, I have to have more facts.
And I know you have...
And I know Mr. Napoli would have had them, and, you know, but I guess he just didn't have enough time.
And Mr. Napoli, probably no one at this point has any idea of what sort of cost this would be to the borough, John? Is that your...
Well, I don't think they knew offhand, they were guessing, but I think that I am more, I'm willing to sit down with them at any point and discuss anything they want to discuss, and if I can help, I will.
I mean, for Mr. Hirsch, as I see it, I think this is the situation that hopefully is, you know, a potential win-win. I mean, if we can come up with a solution working with Mr. Naples, I say "we," the borough, not the planning board, but if the borough is able to come up with a situation working with Mr. Naples, that obviously benefits the residents of his building, as well as, you know, the safety of the borough. And I know Mr. Naples has historically always been willing to work with the borough. So I appreciate that you've allowed us to have this conversation. I think there's a lot of value in the public having a mutual understanding of, you know, how these, how the building proposed will work with the borough. Thank you.
So Chrissy, is there anybody else, any other questions?
Mr. Cohen has his hand up.
Sure, Thomas Cohen, 612 Third Avenue. This is comments at this point, is it not?
Yes.
Do I have to be sworn?
You can. Mr. Cohen, do you swear that the evidence you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thomas J. Cohen, 612 Third Avenue. I like to say that, you know, my first experience with development in the GBW zone was very disturbing, because the first application at Giamano's requested a variance for 36 parking spaces. And it was very stressful. I had to hire my own planner, consult with my own engineer and lawyer. I'm happy to say that this developer and his team of architect and planner and legal team, Mr. Hirsch, have brought us a really solid application, really avoiding any variances possible. The loading zone variance was granted to Giamano's. I did not argue that one, because I was burned out from arguing the 36 parking space variance. So I do want to compliment you, and I do believe that future applicants to this board and other boards should realize that it makes for a much more seamless process to follow the ordinances as closely as you can, so that the Borough Bradley Beach gets the proper result and the developer gets the proper result. I do want to thank Mr. Naples for removing the billboard, which many people may have forgotten. I found it to be a big eyesore, and that alone is a positive criteria to grant the variance for the parking of the loading zone. But thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal, you did a great job, and I'm happy with the interactions about the streetlights. I only mentioned the materials on the outside of the building, only because I'm disappointed with the way the cedar impressions weathered on the red building. You'll notice it's very faded for a building that is that young. And so I was concerned about the viability of the product that Mr. Naples is going to use. You may want to look at some other companies, because I personally don't think the red building held up that well.
Mr. Chairman, can I talk for a minute?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, thank you. The red building used, I hate to say it, they used the cheapest vinyl in the business. That's why I said, I put it on record that I'm using Certainty vinyl siding. It's the best siding out there, it does not fade. I've been building houses for quite a while, I've never had to take any siding down because it faded.
But you agree that building, that building didn't wear very well, did it?
Well, I know it didn't, because they, actually, they could even go back to the manufacturer, the company went out of business.
Okay. But thank you very much, Mr. Naples. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Mr. Naples, and I'm not, I don't want to nitpick or anything, but I would ask that you look into Certainty, because Certainty has had a number of lawsuits that I've been personally involved with due to fade on the darker colors.
Yes.
Correct. Which is why the red may have faded.
That's why I stayed away from the real box.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So is there any other questions?
I'm just taking a peek. I don't see...
Don't see anybody.
...comments.
Mr. Hirsch, do you have any closing comments?
Very briefly, we appreciate your time and patience and the detail in which you approached the application. We try to do the same as a team. As we pointed out, again, probably not that often, I know in my business doing this, you get a variance-free application, other than this loading zone issue, on a site plan with this kind of development. So we try to work, as we've said, with the fire department with no legal obligation. Happy to do it, my clients. So we think that the variance itself, we provided the grounds required by the municipal use law to establish the basis for a C2 variance, that it is a better zoning alternative, as testified to by Mr. Fixter. And the site plan, I think we've addressed all of Mr. Frida's concerns and comments, and he had very few, because it is a centrally conforming site. So with that, I request your approval of this, and in the future, Mr. Naples said he's happy to sit down with the borough, the fire department, or any, you know, any combination, to discuss issues as to that siren. But again, we don't think that's part of this application in any way should be involved in the determination of this application on our site, which is essentially fully conforming. Thank you very much again for your time and patience.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. So at this point, public questions, any further comments are closed, and Mr. Chair, if you could take over for purposes of the board.
Yes, so I guess the next step is to vote on it.
Well, does any board member wish to make a comment prior to calling for a vote?
Oops, I bet.
That's okay. Seeing none. Would any, would any board member like to make a motion?
I can't, right?
I don't see why you couldn't.
I vote we approve. Do, should I give some reasons why?
Please do.
Okay. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be much better than what's there now, it'd be much more appealing to look at. I mean, there is certain issues that were brought up, but Mr. Naples seemed to be willing to work with everything that was brought up. Not having a loading dock is, to me, is, it's not a bad, it's okay, they can work around that. The stack parking, I think water seeps its own level as well, and that people living or using those units with stack parking will figure it out. No, I think it's gonna be a good project for the town, and I approve yes. Next?
Chrissy, can you move it? Can you call the roll, please? I got a second, I'm sorry, we need a second.
I have a second.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Gubatose, second.
Thank you, Al, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jung?
I would say it's very well thought out and presented, the application. I raised a concern about the single ingress egress, and I understand the factors, limiting factors. I wish that it were possible to have additional ingress egress, because it just seems to me to have that number of vehicles going through one entrance on to and off Main Street. Maybe a concern, considering how quiet that property has been for many years. But being that there have, certainly was not raised as a engineering concern, I will accept the testimony. I certainly ask that public comments that regard to maximizing the safety aspects of the single egress egress be followed through. And with that concern being addressed, I approve.
Thank you, Mr. Jung.
Mr. Marco?
Mr. Naples' contribution to this community and his past projects have really elevated Main Street, and I just really sincerely want to thank you for that. And this project is certainly an improvement on the current site, but I do worry about double parking on Main Street due to lack of a loading zone, and I do worry about potentially more street parking and parking in the residential area across the street due to the tandem parking design. So unfortunately, because of those two issues, I feel there is a substantial impairment to the residents, and so I unfortunately have to vote no on this project.
Mr. Waterman? George, you're muted.
Mute. I vote yes. I feel that that's been a very positive improvement in that, on this property, given the conditions that it's been in. I think a well-thought plan as far as not seeking many variances. And I thank everybody that designed this for taking those considerations.
Mr. Gubatose?
Well, number one, I want to compliment Mr. Naples and his team of professionals. I do think this is a very well-constructed, considered, designed project, especially given the challenges that developers face, working with our Main Street and the density challenges we have and the parking limitations we have. The design is very attractive, and I need to address a handful of points here for the record, but I share Ms. DeMarco's, you know, concerns about the stack parking. But that said, I think this team has done everything they can to address the parking challenges that we face, and I think it will be up to the residents of that building to do their best to manage the space, and good luck to them if they do need parking on Main Street as a spillover. I will say that I love the fact that Mr. Naples has already removed those billboards. I think Mr. Cohen said that as well. That was one of my number-one issues that I wanted to compliment the team on. But I really did appreciate the work that you did with the stormwater runoff. I appreciate the fact that you've actually created two more parking spaces for handicap while still surrendering the two for our fire department. The fact that you've, you're adding three trees and possibly a fourth to our Main Street, I think is a wonderful addition. The facade itself, I think you've done a great job minimizing the disruption to the facade of the actual parking garage entrance. I love the concrete apron, the fact that you're willing to extend that, and your willingness to comply with any required affordable housing, that was very important to me. The pedestrian light posts, I know you're willing to work with the borough on that. I think that is going to add additional character, as well as safety, to the building. I love the thoughtful architecture. I want to highlight that I did not miss the fact that you've created the jogging, jogging the windows in to allow that potential setback clearance. The fact that you're also willing to work with the borough to relocate the siren, I realize that's not a condition that we evaluate as a planning board, but I know that this planning board, in approving this, will be putting the borough in a position where they will have to move that siren, based on everything I've heard this evening. So I appreciate Mr. Naples' willingness to continue to work with the borough. And finally, in terms of the positives I've seen, your willingness to reduce some of the door openings, you know, especially maybe the storage rooms, we said, opening onto the sidewalk, just to minimize the potential challenges to pedestrians. I thought all of the thing you've, all of the work you've done, and all of the commitments you've made to address some of the concerns that we've raised as a board, I give this a very resounding thumbs up. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. And Mr. Maynor?
Yes, I vote yes. I think the proposal is very attractive. The benefits far outweigh the loss of the loading dock. I'm in favor. Good luck, John.
And Chair Rosenthal?
I say yes, I totally agree. That's definitely improvement for the town and for visually. Traffic going in and out, there is a light right up the street, so traffic would be stopped. I think that's minimized a bit. There is ample parking, and like I said before, the stack parking, water seeps its own level... There is ample parking, and like I said before, the stack parking, water seeps its own level. Not having a loading dock, it's not a big enough issue to hold this up in my mind. Like you said, these are small places. The deliveries would be, I would assume they'd be relatively small and out quick. So I agree. I say yes. I think it's good mail.
Great. Motion carried.
I'd like to thank everyone for your time this evening, and I appreciate all the positive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good luck, Mr. Naples.
Thank you again.
Thank you, John.
Good night, everyone.
Mr. Chair? Want to hit it?
Can we get a motion to end meeting?
Well, our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, September 24th, which will also take place via Zoom at 6:30 PM.
Yes.
Okay, so my, Mr. Rosenthal, you're making the motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
My second.
Everybody's seconds. All in favor?
Thank you, everybody. You did a great job. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.